School Board of Trustees meeting. It's Monday, July 21st, 2025 at 6 o'clock. Rule call.
Connie Horn is absent.
Okay, having a quorum, we'll call the meeting to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome. We have no recognitions tonight. We do have a revision. We're going to approve revision 4.F.3 and K through L. I'll accept a motion.
So moved.
All those in favor of approving the revision, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to comment on an agenda item? Okay, consent agenda. We have minutes from July 7th, 2025. There's claims, donations. We have an anonymous donation of $335 towards the purchase of books for LH Carpenter classrooms. And we have a donation of $80 from Tri-Capa for the LH Carpenter Nurse Fund. Awesome. And we have, for financials, we have the revenue and expense update and the appropriations report tonight. I'll accept a motion on the consent agenda.
So moved.
Discussion. First, we'd like to thank the anonymous donor for the $335 to purchase books for the LH classrooms and also the donation of $80 from Tri-Capa for the LH Carpenter's Nurse Fund. We will then move into our revenue and expense updates. Let's see. We will start with our revenues and expenses for June. Our revenue was slightly higher than what we had projected. This was due to our tax draws for both operations and debt being higher than what we had projected, which are good things. Our accounts payable was just a little bit higher than what we had projected, and this was mainly due to having a higher debt payment. That is because the new debt that we took on at the end of the year, we had not updated for that. So we're reviewing our debt payments for the next 18 months to make sure that we have those a little closer. We, our payroll expenses were a little bit lower than what were projected, which was good because we did pay out our three DLI teachers that went back to Spain. We pay out their contracts in the month of June instead of it being paid until August. So I was expecting that to be a little bit higher. So that's a good thing to see. So we were expected to have a net income of just around $400,000. And because of those increased revenues, we did end up with a net income of almost double that, about $801,000. So that's a good thing. Moving on to our key fund balances. Our ed fund sits at just under $1.7 million. Operations is minus $166,150. And rainy day is at $547,675. And just as usual, I will remind the board, we're using some rainy day funds for transportation salaries as well as other building maintenance operations. So that will continue to drop each month. I do want to share with the board and our community where these numbers were just two years and nine months ago. So on September 30th of 2022, our ed fund had $10,049 in it. Rainy day had $102,858. And operations was negative $1,920,921. So when you add all of those up in September of 2022, our key fund balance was negative $1,808,14. Now, our key fund balance is positive $27,729. So that's a change of right around like $3.8 million. So I just wanted to share that. You know, we're still negative in that operations fund, but we have come such a long way. And I just want to thank our teachers, our administrators, our board members. We should feel really good about the changes that we've made in our financial situation over the last, that was two years and nine months that we were able to accomplish that. So. All right. Any questions on that? Okay, the next thing we will look at is our appropriation report for June. And this does run January through June. So we look at the last six months. For our ed fund, and this is like getting really, really small. For our revenue, we have collected 50.1% of our budget. So that's good. Because it's June, we're halfway through. That's where we would want to be, is 50%. So we're just a little bit over that. When you look at some of our expense lines, we have a few that are over. Like I said, we did pay out those DLI teachers. So that would be at kindergarten, elementary, and middle school. So seeing that we're right at or below the 50% in those, I feel pretty good about that. I was looking, September, no, August is a three-pay month. So we will go back over, but we've got it balanced out for the first six months. Our summer school lines, we did go over a little bit what we appropriated. That was mainly at the elementary level because when we saw the number of students that were going to have I read remediation, we went ahead and increased the number of teachers. We will get reimbursements for some of this. We won't get the whole thing reimbursed by the state, but we will get some of it. So overall, in our ed fund, we are sitting at 46.4% of our appropriations. So we're below that 50%. So that's a real good, real good target that we've hit. When we move into operations, we have collected 62% of our revenue. We get a larger tax draw in June than we do in December. So that's part of it. And then we also have part of our tax anticipation warrant in there that eventually will get paid back. We do have a lot of lines in this, in our operations, that are over that 50%. Some of these have been moved to rainy day. So as we continue on, they will continue to get smaller. We are, in the entire fund, we're at 53.7% of our appropriation. Last month, we were at 54 point, I think it was 54.4. So we are dropping a little bit each month. So I'll keep an eye on that. And hopefully, we see that overall appropriation getting closer to the target that we have set for each month. Any questions on that?
All those in favor of approving the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. The next regular scheduled board meeting will be Monday, August 4th, 2025, here at Wabash City Hall at 6 o'clock PM. There's some items of communications. There is no old business, new business. A, the board will be presented with the 2024 through 2025 WCS iLearn results.
All right. These results were approved by the State Board of Education, I believe it was last week. So we're able to share these now. This is just a little summary about what they saw across the state. Most grade levels remained within one percentage point of last year's results for ELA. Now, remember, when they compare last year's third grade to this year's third grade, they're not comparing the same students. They're looking just at that grade level. Grade three saw the largest increase, and that was at 1.7 percentage points. And then grade seven saw the largest decrease, and that was 3.9 percentage points. My guess is that the focus that we've put on the science of reading and the literacy cadre across the state, we're seeing more students getting the instruction that they need K through three. And that's why we're seeing these increases in third grade. In the area of math, there was a very small increase in all grade levels except third grade, and that was a decline of .9. Grade eight saw the largest at 3.1. So the language arts results for Wabash City, and I have done these by grade level, but then I also color-coded it so you can look at the cohort. So our third grade, we were at 29.7. You can see that compared to last year's third grade, that was quite a big jump. When you move up to fourth grade then, you can see what our score was. And then the cohort change shows the increase or decrease in the percentage of students that pass. So at the fourth grade, we saw 15.7% more students pass the fourth grade language arts. Fifth grade, that was another one that we saw a slight increase. But when you look at the cohort, it was huge. It was 20.5% increase. Sixth grade, we did see a small decrease, 5.1%. Seventh grade, we saw another big cohort jump, 7.5%. And then eighth grade, we saw a decrease, 10.5%. Moving on to math. Our third grade, we were at 31.1. And then moving on to fourth grade, we saw a cohort decrease of about 3.9%. Our fifth grade did see a cohort increase. And we kind of just, from there, were alternating. We saw a decrease in the cohort at sixth grade. But then seventh grade, we were almost the same. And then eighth grade, we saw another slight decrease. We did get science and social studies results. Last year, we did not get science. They did not test. This year, we did. And we can't really do cohort because our students only take it in fourth grade and sixth grade. And it's not the same standards. It's not even the same content. So what I've put on here is what we had and then what the state average was. So in fourth grade, our state average, we were almost in line with the state average. Sixth grade, we were a little bit behind. So as a district, we were slightly behind the state average. In social studies, we only test at fifth grade. And we were, our fifth grade class last year was slightly behind compared to the state average. So our next steps. We are getting a new reading curriculum for grades K through five, which does focus on the science of reading. We did join the literacy cadre last year. We will continue with that this year. It's a two-year commitment. We plan to utilize the iLearn checkpoint assessment data for remediation and retesting. We, last year, our middle school opted into that pilot. And they felt like they were getting good information to be able to pinpoint students that were below proficiency or approaching. And so they knew what students needed that targeted remediation. So we have a plan for grades three through eight, a timeline that this is when we will give checkpoint one. They're allowed to take checkpoint one twice. They get two opportunities. So once we give it, then any student that is below proficiency or approaching will be provided remediation. And we can do that through advisory within our classes, during win time at OJ, to remediate just those students that didn't hit that at or above. And then we'll give them the second opportunity of that first checkpoint anywhere from four to five weeks later after they've been provided with remediation. And so we kind of have that planned out for the entire year. I think that'll be really good for, one, for our parents to know this is when these tests are given. But also for our teachers to have a plan of, if I have students that didn't learn it, I know I've got four to five weeks to remediate and then give them that second opportunity. We will continue staff training on RTI. How do we respond to students, with students that don't learn it? And then I've begun looking at what kind of staff training do we need to offer to our teachers that teach math? You know, and that might be finding something that we need to send a few representatives from each grade level two to go to and come back and bring information. So. Any questions?
How old is our curriculum for math?
I think we are in, is it, is this year three? No, because we didn't have it my first year.
I was thinking it wasn't that old.
Yeah, it's not. So, so. And if you look at math, you can see that we have seen some pretty good increases over the last few years. Yeah. If you look at the district, you know, in 2022, we were at 18.7. We've gone up almost 10 percentage points. So.
Are they hitting hard on the math facts themselves? Because I noticed the last few years I've been in subbing, a lot of kids don't know their basic math facts. And to get onto the next level of their math, they got to know the basics before they can step on up.
Yeah. And I would say that that is something that I think has, when we were all in school, like I can remember staying in recess because I didn't know my math facts. And I don't know that they do that like we did. So. Right. And that is something that, you know, parents at home, that's a great thing. Flashcards with, you know, addition, subtraction, multiplication, division. Great way for parents to assist at home.
Any other questions? Okay. Item B, board to approve the revised attendance policy. I'll accept a motion.
Second.
Discussion.
So these changes are a result of recent legislative updates. The major changes with the attendance policy is the categories for excused absences. And these are required, these are the required category titles that we have to report to the DOE. So, you know, they have medical, they have family planned, family unplanned. Like I said, those are the codes that we have to use when we report to the DOE. So we just thought, let's put those into our policy. And it will be consistent from K through 12. We've also added that for the coming year, students cannot be expelled based on attendance alone. It used to be that if a student had been truant so many days, we could expel them. The legislators have said that for this year only, we cannot expel for attendance. And I don't know if they're doing that because they want to see, do we see a drop in expulsions because of that? And it could change after next year's legislative session, but we did add that in. And then the truancy prevention procedures. When we updated our policy last year, it was only for grades K through six. And now they have said these interventions need to be K through 12. So those were the major changes of the policy. And because this is just revising a policy and there are things that we had to do because of legislation, yeah, my recommendation is to approve this policy. And once it's approved, we will get information out to families so they understand, you know, what our limits are, what the different categories are.
Any other questions? All those in favor of approving the revised policy, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. Item C, board to approve the revised bullying policy. I'll accept a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
So this is another one that because of recent legislative updates, we had to update. The major change here includes the requirement to inform both parents when a report of bullying is made and the timeline for which that must happen. So we've included that. We've also added that this rule can be applied regardless of physical location of the bullying incident. So what that means is a student can be posting things at home on social media. But if it comes into our building and can cause an unsafe learning environment, disciplinary action can take place. That was not in our policy previously.
So someone points out that it's on Facebook. Can we do anything about it?
Can a student be disciplined if they're putting stuff on Facebook? Yes, we can do something about it. And as a middle school principal, there were many times that I had to deal with that.
Any other questions? All those in favor of approving the revised bullying policy, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion passes. Item D, board to approve the following resignations from the following certified staff. One, Jake Stevens as WHS math teacher, including his coaching positions. And two, Michaela Stevens as WMS and WHS math teacher.
So moved. Second.
Discussion.
Mr. and Mrs. Stevens have found teaching positions closer to home. I know they have two young children, so I respect their desire to be closer to family, completely understand that. We wish them the best of luck in their future endeavors. And I know that Mr. Blossom and Mr. Mattern have been working on a plan of how we're going to cover these positions.
All those in favor of approving the resignation, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. Item E, board to approve Beth Miller and Lori Gunderman to share a paraprofessional position at $11 per hour with Mrs. Miller working four days a week and Mrs. Gunderman working one day a week for no more than 29.75 hours combined. So moved. Discussion.
Mrs. Miller currently serves as a paraprofessional at OJ. She had talked to Beth about, can I get less hours? She didn't want to just retire completely, but she did want less hours. And Mrs. Gunderman was willing to take on one day a week. So Mrs. Miller and Mrs. Gunderman will share that. Like you stated, Mrs. Miller is going to do four of the days and Mrs. Gunderman will do one of the days. OJ will have the same amount of para-hours between those two.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. Item F, board to approve hiring the following classified staff. One, Lacey Jones as an OJ paraprofessional, effective August 8th, 2025, at $11 per hour for 29.7 hours per week. Two, Astrid Burns as a preschool paraprofessional LH Carpenter, beginning August 8th, 2025. And Madison Inman. We're to approve hiring Madison Inman as a three-year-old teaching paraprofessional at LH Carpenter, beginning at the 2025 through 2026 school year.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Mrs. Jones is taking an open para position. I believe we had someone leave towards the end of the school year and we never replaced that position. So she will be filling in there. Mrs. Burns is going to fill an open position at LH. I believe that will be in our next. We probably should have flipped. We probably should have flip-flopped these because item G is where the positions are becoming available. And so we're approving them to fill those positions. And then Mrs. Inman, we brought back that four-year-old classroom. And so we're moving a three-year-old up to four-year-old. And so Mrs. Inman is going to take that open three-year-old position. So it's kind of, I told Kathy today, I felt like who's on first that hole. So we just want to welcome all these ladies to Wabash City Schools.
Lacey graduated last year, I believe, right?
Astrid.
Did Astrid too? Yeah, that's what I thought.
Both Maddie and Astrid and the beta, all three went through our CBA program.
Nice.
Awesome. That's good. Raise them up.
Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. Welcome. Board to approve the following transfers from classified staff. One, Naveah Metler from preschool paraprofessional at LH Carpenter to the Gym Project Lead the Way, teaching paraprofessional at LH Carpenter at the beginning of the 25-26 school year. And two, Gabby Wagner from a three-year-old teaching paraprofessional to a four-year-old teaching paraprofessional at the beginning of the 25-26 school year.
Second.
Discussion.
Mrs. Metler is going into our preschool teaching para that does PE and Project Lead the Way. We had the teacher that had done that recently decided to stay home. So that position was open. And like I said, Mrs. Wagner is going from that three-year-old to that four-year-old classroom that we brought back. So the person before is going to fill that position. So we just want to thank both of these ladies for their willingness and flexibility to do something different as Mrs. Wilson works to get all her positions filled. I think you have one left. One left.
All those in favor of approving the transfers, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. Item H, board to approve hiring Dana Wright as a consultant at a rate of $50 per hour for up to 10 hours. Dana will guide us through the rollover of our student fee management system to the new school year. We currently have no one in the district who has done this before. I'll accept a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
So last year, Jennifer Hopkins was with us, and she did that student fee rollover. While we currently do not charge for textbooks, recent legislation does allow for us to charge for consumables. This year, we plan to do an audit of consumable fees across the district and may consider charging for next year to ensure that our student fee management system is ready. If we elect to do that next year, we have to do this rollover. Mrs. Wright did this prior, before Mrs. Hopkins. So she is going to train not only Mrs. Huff, but she's also going to train Mrs. Kugler. And so when we get Shelley's replacement, we will at least have somebody else that has done it that when that person is trained, she'll have someone that she can go to. So we appreciate Mrs. Wright being willing to come in after hours or on weekends to help Shelley through this process.
Could you explain what consumables means?
Yes, it could be art supplies. So, you know, if we have to buy new paint, new, you know, paper. Consumables even could be paper that we use in classrooms. It just depends on the class. Most classes that have consumables are art, science classes.
Industrial, maybe.
Yes, industrial tech. So if we're having to buy wood, different things like that. So I didn't feel like we were ready to say, this is how much we need to charge students. I would rather take a year to really look at, these are the things that our students are using, and how do we calculate how much we charge each parent?
It's fair and engaging too, as well, right?
Right, yes, fax class. So those classes where kids are, you know, really the more hands-on. But like I said, even in a regular classroom, paper might be considered a consumable.
Okay. All those in, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. Item I, board to approve moving the non-operational cooler to surplus to be able to scrap and recuperate some money back from having to get rid of it. The cooler is from LHC and is no longer operational. We had an extra cooler at WMS that we moved to LHC.
So moved. Second.
Discussion.
Mrs. Harold would like to have the cooler marked as surplus so we're able to get rid of it. We're hoping that maybe we can get a little money from it. We're just thankful that we had an extra cooler at the middle school so we didn't have to purchase a new one. We were able to just move that over.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. Jay, board to approve the following fall coaches. Athletic supervision, Trenton Daughtry. Assistant volleyball, Stacy Parrott. See, girls volleyball, Chelsea Montgomery. Volleyball volunteers, Jade Stumbo. Football volunteers, Justin Denny, Tony Burton, and Tyler Niccom. Girls soccer assistant, Scott Dinkins. Girls soccer volunteer, Lindsay Schenkel, Bailey Yaden, and Riley Yokum. Middle school cheerleader slash booster club, Angel Hosteller. Middle school cross country, Caitlin Lloyd and Ryan Evans. Middle school cross country assistant, Derek Vogel. Cross country volunteer, Rachel Hovermail. Eighth grade football assistant, Antonio Grant. Seventh grade football head coach, Bryant Miller. Middle school football volunteer, Sammy Hipskin. Eighth grade volleyball, Ashlyn Cruz. Seventh grade volleyball, Sarah Dillon. Sixth grade volleyball, J.C. Yaden and Taylor McFarlane.
So moved. Second.
Discussion.
I checked with Mr. Stone today, and he said that most of the, I believe all of these coaches have coached for us in the past or have volunteered. So we just want to say thank you to all of them. Appreciate their willingness to come and work with our student athletes.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. Okay, board to approve FMLA leave for employee 21 beginning June 25th, 2025.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Those opposed, motion passes. L, board to accept the resignation of Terry Denny as WHS guidance counselor, effective July 1st, 2025.
So moved. Second.
Discussion?
Mrs. Denny filled in last year for us, and we greatly appreciate her willingness to do so. We knew that she only wanted to do this for one year. So we have already filled the position with Mrs. Petrinio. So this is just, we needed to make sure that we had a resignation on file. So again, we just want to thank Mrs. Denny for coming out of retirement and filling that need for us.
Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes. Items from superintendent.
Last week was our online registration period. We had 848 students that had the process completed. So we still have quite a few out there. We are working through the completed registrations this week, and then we will reopen the registration portal window next Monday for any family that missed that window. So there's still, there'll still be time. Our admin assistants will be back in the building next week, so if there's any questions, they'll be able to reach out to those buildings. We also want to remind families that need transportation. The transportation request form was emailed out to families, and that is separate from registration. So even if you haven't completed registration, but you know your child is going to need transportation, you can complete that transportation request form. They have until this Friday to complete it to ensure that they get transportation the first week of school. I want to thank our custodial crew. They've done a great job this summer getting our buildings in tip-top shape for the coming school year. Our, our summer student custodians have been a great help for our custodians this year. We do have our Big Idea event this Wednesday at OJ. This is through our partnership with Second Harvest Food Bank. It will be held in the gym this month because our cafeteria floor was recently waxed and is curing. So families will enter through door 22, and the event runs from 4:00 to 5:30. We just want to encourage all our families to come in, take advantage, see what, you know, food is out there. It's open to anyone. Open houses will take place on August 11th in all our buildings, and I believe all of these have been posted on Parent Square. They are all on August 11th. OJ's will be from 4:00 to 5:30. LH's will be 5:00 to 6:30. And then the middle school and high school will go 6:00 to 7:30. And they're going to do a special fifth grade orientation starting at 6:30 in the fifth grade teachers' classrooms. So again, that's out on Parent Square. As we get closer to that date, we'll also get it out on Facebook. And our first staff day, staff days this year are August 8th and 11th. And our first student day is August 12th. So that means we have 21 days before students come back to school.
Okay. Items from administrators? Items from board members? We'll start with Jason.
The only thing I have is this Saturday is, July 26th is the back-to-school bash at the high school. It's the free event that Costa puts on that has free backpacks, haircuts, clothes, books, school supplies, all sorts of things. So if you know anyone in the community that might need some things to get the students back into the classroom prepared, then this is a great opportunity to help them out, help families out that might need some.
Say when that is again?
July 26th. It's, I believe it's Saturday, correct?
Nine to one, I believe.
Nine to one o'clock, I was just going to say. I know that I said it, they have haircuts as well. So I think it's a really cool event. It's usually pretty busy. So get there early and, and get your stuff. So that's it.
I have nothing to add.
River cleanup is also that day. If you want to go help clean up the river.
Okay. I don't think I have anything. I won't be, Jason will be in charge next time, next meeting, so.
I'll take the time.
Other than that, everybody enjoy the rest of their summer. With that, we'll adjourn. Thank you.